Alright. Is there a reminder, we are recording at Norton Media too? Oh, we are, yeah. Yeah, okay. Alright, so we're gonna go to vote to approve the minutes of January twenty fifth, twenty twenty four, and we're gonna chance to look at it. Any new questions, concerns? Motion to approve the minutes from January twenty fifth, twenty twenty four? Second?
Second.
Others in favor? Alright. Alright, Warren, Stephanie. I have reviewed and approved the following warrant, school expense warrant, January twenty fifth, twenty twenty four. Twenty two thousand seven hundred ninety seven dollars fifty seven cents. February sixth, twenty twenty four, four hundred and seventy seven thousand six seventy four, thirty one cents. And then school payroll warrants, January twenty fifth, twenty twenty four. One million one hundred and seventy nine thousand one hundred and three dollars thirty three cents, I wish to extend them to public record. And street path update?
Yes.
Hi.
So for the middle school, the basketball teams finish up their regular season play. While we're proud of both teams, a tremendous congrat- congratulations is in order for the girls team who won the Nassau Elite title by finishing with the league's best record. I guess speaker Ivy Watts came and spoke all the students of the middle school about the importance of resiliency, self-care, and overall mental health. She was a well-received and gave the students numerous tips and tricks that they could implement in their own lives to assist with issues that they may be having. Following on the heels of the hundredth day and in anticipation of February break, Norton Middle School is set to host beer week next week. Students voted on the themes this week and decided upon the following themes, including Monday the twelfth, class pajama day. Wednesday the thirteenth-
Reporting in progress.
Wednesday the fourteenth as country club versus country day. Thursday the fifteenth as Adam Sandler day. And Friday the sixteenth as freaky vibe, where teachers just like students and students just like teachers. Next for the yell, last week we finished our round two week H O Y P T O bootshathon glow fund run fundraiser. The c- the c- illumination of the bootshathon is a glow fun run in the gym. Where we dance in the gym with strobe lights and different colored lights and the kids run for thirty five laps around the gym. The kids have an absolute blast running and having the best time of their life. We were able to raise the unbelievable generous support and help of the H O Y nation community over two twenty one thousand dollars, which we're using to continue to pay off our new playground from last year. Because the kids were able to raise about, about, above our twenty K O, Mr. Gigan and Mr. Bilawa will be flying, flying player in this room. The individual classes earn multiple incentives for their meeting in, in class school, which will bill mostly, mostly be enjoying at the end of the week and to the next week prior to the vacation. But Jevada actually take time more games than one.
And then the J C S, uh, the J C S has been enjoying, been enjoying our artist president, John Weiner. For the last few weeks, the mosaic is almost done with about two weeks of grinding and cleanup work to be done. We will send school committee an invitation to the unveiling in early March. We have celebrated the hundredth day of school, one hundred and first day of school this week with all kinds of math, writing, science, and community activities. Looking, look for the J C S one hundred, one hundredth day photo booth online at some point. The J C S S P O is partnered with Norton Outdoor Center to have an event on Valentine's Day called a story night. Volunteers from Wheaton are coming out that evening to show families the night sky through the telescope swans case. Get to enjoy hot chocolate and a special family night outdoors, fingers crossed for the weather. And then for the high school, um, it was Norton night at the Boston Celtics game last night. Wellness and P E teacher Nicole News was recognized as a hero among us by Special Olympics of Massachusetts for her pilot's work for inclusion. Uh, Norton Unified Basketball selected to attend the game and played in an inner squad scrimmage at halftime. Almost every player on the team was able to hit a shot during the scrimmage. Before halftime, the unified players got to be on the floor during the Celtics shoot around and were able to meet a couple of players. Special thanks to coach, coaches Erin Roy and Dan McDonough for applying for the program and for organizing the trip. Thanks, thanks to the fifty staff, students, and families who came to support.
I think that was great to see all our social media last night, the pitches and the votes.
It was, that was awesome.
Yeah, it was just, that was awesome. Just absolutely loved it. They had so much fun and, um, it was just, yeah.
Very, very experienced.
I'm glad they recognized the goals.
Yes, yeah.
I was telling you like I saw, wanted to get. I missed shot from down.
Actually, my friend of mine has had tickets to the game that lives in another area. And she was like, she sent me pictures. She's like, this is such a cool event, you guys. Her father, you know, it's, you know, she was, she was happy to see like.
Yeah, actually one of our select four members, um, Kevin Schneider worked there last night as well, and he sent me some pictures and he goes, I had no idea it was Norton that.
Oh, no way.
Yeah, so I got some great pictures because he was much closer to. That's awesome. Thank you, guys. Appreciate it. Alright, review and discuss bullying prevention plan. Any you have?
I am up. Um, so just a very quick update, um, we have pulled together a group of the administrators and some other folks uh, to take a quick look at our bullying plan. It is up to date in terms of D E S I. Um, in fact, uh, D E S I reviewed regarding a situation the other day. They pull approval of where it is, but there's some updates we need to still do. We cover some of the language, some of the, um, uh, programs that will be utilized now, so we will be, uh, meeting as a group. If you get a look at that and decide to find two minutes, um, it is up on the website, um, you can find it in a number of different places on, upon the website. It's all automated, um, and then through the OnCast platform, uh, those reports get sent to building administrators and to myself. Um, so through the email system. So we've got a, a number of situations where, you know, report gets in and we, if, if I see it and I make sure I call or somebody else sees it, um, they'll make all quickly so that we can act on it as best we can as possible. Uh, just a real quick update that we're working on it, just updating the language, but at this time it does, uh, past musters.
So really, this is just bullying. It's not like disciplinary actions for others. This is just the bullying.
It's the actual piece of, you know, how, how the bullying, uh, requirements, what needs to be there for D E S I. Um, you'll also see very similar, uh, we're working, as you guys know, uh, with Children's Hospital, uh, threat assessment grant. Uh, so, uh, there are also a similar looking form that's been developed that's up right now on the website. Uh, I think it's about critical incident slash threat. Um, but actually tomorrow, uh, we have a group of students, uh, from the high school and middle school that originally were the, um, super attendance advisory group, um, and then some of those kids have split off and they're working with the folks in Children's Hospital and Annie Ryer, who's actually, oh, just here at the high, uh, not here. At the high school, um, who also runs our active minds chapter, and they'll be taking a look at that, that process. Um, it's part of how the grant works, um, so we're trying to get that, that voice. Um, they've been working with other, uh, districts who also have the grant set to look at like, okay, what's the best way to get this out to students and families? How do we communicate that information? Um, you know, when, when we have some, you know, there's, there's some kind of, you know, serious threat happening within the community, like in school throughout time. Uh, and, uh, so we have, unfortunately had to utilize the protocol on a few occasions this year, um. It's great. We've had, you know, cooperation with, with school, school police, um, C C B C and their mobile team, Children's Hospital, um, Children's Hospital's math team. So it really has been, uh, a nice process to follow, keeps us, you know, kind of keep us on track and, and, uh, it's research based. So all of those things are there, um, and we'll continue to kind of find two, some of that based on the information we get, uh, and we work together.
Anybody have anything else on that? Alright, thank you for the follow up on that. Alright, review and vote on springtime meeting warrant article regarding sidewalks at L G N. That's a student.
Um, so the track of safety committee is that, that school committee put a warrant article, um, springtime meeting to hire an engineering firm, um, to engineer a project, to review the engineering project for an infrastructure of sidewalks at L G N. Um, so the lack of sidewalks at L G N is something that the track safety committee has, um, looked into for the past year and a half. Um, working with the charities as well, one of the, um, what they are looking to do is to get an infrastructure grant from the state, um, which is going to work on twenty thousand to a million dollars, um, but wishes through safety to school. Um, in order to check this grant and even apply, there are several steps that you have to do. One of them is being in a strong partnership with Safe Roots to School. We have done that, um, over several years, but especially the past year alone, we've established a very strong relationship with them. Just so the history for over five schools have already been involved in them. We just got on board Dr. Darwin and I, um, last year at the school. Um, and so one of the things that you have to do, um, in order to even apply for the grant is to do a walk. Um, so we arranged that with Safe Roots to School where, um, a rep from them and an engineer comes out and they, um, probably want the weather, the students were more likely to watch school. Um, so we did that at L G N last spring, um, which is the result that you have in front of you. So they provide recommendations, um, best practices, um, and other items that might help the safe of these big passage to school, and one of them is sidewalks, which we all fitted, um, as well as other signs. So, um, we also did a parent survey last spring to ask if how many students would be watching the school, um, and also with the ball show there as well. Um, the last item that is needed in order for us to apply for this grant is an engineering study, which is why the track safety at the school. Um, we do not have a, um, price of what that would be. Um, we genuinely have asked, I vote, um, a certain amount. He said, for now, we could, um, put a placeholder in, but he has reached out to his contacts at Safe Roots to School for an engineering estimate. Um, I've asked ours as well. They're all working on it. We just don't have a time set. So, um, the, us recently, the town did a study on, um, the center of Morton where one oh six, Mantle Ave and Taun, and, uh, Taunav all come together.
On one oh three.
Thank you. I was gonna say one oh six. Oh, yeah, sorry.
I was gonna say, we can have each do their own study.
Alright, sorry. One, thank you Peter. One twenty three, Mantle Ave and Taunav. Um, and that, that estimate of the engineering cost was twenty five thousand dollars. We do anticipate that the Plain Street engineering estimate will be less than that because it's really just a straight and narrow versus, um, you know, one twenty three. And the other road that it's really very complicated intersection over there, so, um, it is really the next logical step for L G N. I was actually really amazed earlier this year. We were doing a lot of work because there was some issues in terms of the parents being parked on the road for a long period of time, both before and after school. And where the L G N, if you're coming from, um, Norton South Washington Street, you really are kind of coming up a small hill. And it makes it difficult to see, um, over that crest in the road. And so it was making it really difficult for drivers because those cars were parked, it was almost an accident waiting to happen. Um, so Christine and Mr. Lozad, um, Mr. Higgins, um, as well as Officer Robichaud and I, we spent a lot of time over there at the beginning of the year, looking at, pick up at the end of the day, looking at shop up in the morning, and we're able to make some changes to that, um, that process, which has been really, really helpful. But I was amazed the amount of families that were actually walking to school at L G N. Uh, while the rest of our schools are all on one twenty three, um, there are access points for families in sidewalks, uh, for the most part. Uh, so this would be the next recommended step. What we could do, and my recommendation to you would be to, um, approve the warrant article as a placeholder at this time. And then what we can do is bring you back the full amount and we can, uh, make sure that we're comfortable with that number. Um, the reason we're bringing it to you now without a phone number is that warrants are due to town hall. So unfortunately, we've been waiting on this number for quite a while and it's not, um, due last week, maybe not, and it's just, I think it's due back now.
So, I think that most know all the certain, basically concept, uh, we just get it at a certain time. That being said, and I'm gonna, I'm gonna go for the placeholder, uh, I'm always uncomfortable with these, we don't all get nervous, and, and in this case, it's kind of, uh, it's, it's magnified. We're potentially in a, in a year that this town is very, very dire, it's, uh, a fiscal standpoint. Potentially going to ask for money to do an engineering, engineering survey. Right now, we don't know what it is. Obviously, the town, we're gonna know what it is. But then on top of that, we don't know what it's gonna cost to actually do it and whether we can get the grant, is it gonna be out of our pocket? I don't know. I mean, I, I don't know, Norton Public Safety Committee, I don't know, they did obviously great, you know, great work to get this, um, the Safe Route to School Assessment Program, I don't wish about that. Is there some kind of, let's say, is there some kind of a mandate from the state that we need to put sidewalks in there or is this more of a, if something will be shown visually, but we're not compelled by law just yet?
Um, we are not compelled by law. It would be something that we would do to make sure that our families and our students are more safe when, um, coming and going to school. Um, but I think on the flip side, yeah, we have to think about if we don't have, if we have to look at the busing number. And if it makes sense to not have busing, except for the mandated busing, then sidewalks aren't gonna be needed, but they're gonna be needed.
But I don't wanna, I don't wanna save money there and spend money here, as well as, and again, I'm gonna vote for the placeholder, but I would just, I would just put that out there that.
Yeah.
We need to think a lot about this and not just the first step, which is the, the engineering assessment, but how is your cost actually due? And are we gonna get that? Cause I mean Christine, you said it was applied, I guarantee you you can get it. So you applied to the grant, they may say, uh, sand, you know, give them a door chest or whatever and, and we're stuck. Okay, we've, we've done the, the survey, we spent, whatever that number is, we'll call it twenty five thousand, we spent twenty five thousand. And now to put in the sidewalks is, we have, uh, two million, it's gonna be six hundred and thirty thousand dollars and we don't have it. So we have no sidewalks and we're on twenty five thousand dollars.
Is this for all the schools? Uh, so it's, I think they want the schools to also bring it forward because it is centered around LG more. The other thing that makes this project desirable to, um, both the Department of Transportation and the Safe Roots to School is the brandy bike path that is going in right in that area. So because it is located so closely to the bike path, we have a better chance of getting the grant for the down the road. Because it's, you know, they're trying to increase transportation options in a region.
I'm glad we have a better chance, but nothing I have said so far is, is, is unsure.
Yeah.
So, just.
I think it's, we started doing all these steps because not that they were a better chance, yes, but it was, it was very light. Like, the reason we started from the very beginning to do these numerous, um, but speaking with them and, um, getting the engineering study, like, even if we weren't to get it, say, this round, because it's only done once, yes, it will be in fall when you can apply. You can still use that study if you didn't get it for fall.
Right. And we just understand what I'm saying.
Yeah.
I'm not, I'm not saying that this is a bad idea. I'm not saying that putting sidewalks in is a bad idea. What I'm saying is, is this might not be a great idea right now. That's what I'm saying. I, I think my biggest concern is it looks like the schools own this process from start to finish.
Right.
But however, my concern is it was brought forth kind of by another group in town.
Right.
And so now my concern is they don't, they may not have any sort of legislative power or they're just an advisory committee. So they have to advise another committee, I E. the school committee, to take this under their belt. When, so it's, it's really to Dennis' point, it's not making us look good asking for money that the town doesn't have. But, I mean, since, since it's a democratic way, if we put it there, the town says yes, then it's.
And, and, and because.
I just feel a little stretched too thin.
Yeah.
For a project that I think is absolutely one hundred percent needed. Um, I've driven by there when school goes into session and I have seen parents with strollers walking down one twenty three. There's a lot of Wheaton athletes that jog through that area. Um, it's, 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 it's a rough neighborhood and a bad sense of safety, not a rough neighborhood. It's like driving down, you know, like a pothole street. You're just, you're going like this down Plain Street because you have people on either side. And that's the other thing is people forget how you're supposed to walk on the street because people are on both sides.
And it's very narrow road.
Yeah.
Yeah. Well, and then on the weekends too, like baseball seems to be, it is, it is crazy.
Yeah, I think to reiterate Dennis' point is sidewalks are needed, yes, I think it'd be a great thing to have for Norton, especially with bike trails, especially with Wheaton. But I also think we gotta, we're walking a very slippery slope and comes out, you know, hey, we're gonna put in probably walking the next sidewalk for a while now. Then you gotta, they're not communicating people's yards, though, those houses on that road are fairly close. You gotta take, although, you know, the, the road can only be so big. You know, so, you know, you're looking at six hundred thousand dollars, it could be on one point two million dollars. We're trying to cut and you know what's gonna run around town. We're cutting education, putting sidewalks.
I mean, I think to me, this should fall under the highway department for our school debt. Because to me, there's no direct correlation between a sidewalk on a street.
And because the program is safe routes to school.
Yes.
Not the connection fits. And so while it doesn't always make sense bureaucratically, this is the way you get the grant money. So.
Well, I'll take it as a grant was completely founded. I'll take it as a grant.
Right.
No.
But I think like everything else, what we've been talking about, it's good, putting to the voters, putting to the voters.
Yeah, I'll tell you, and honestly, I also like to see Wheaton get vaulted.
Yeah.
Because they have a whole soccer field and you have the indoor over there. Those kids are always walking down that road, you know? But I mean, it's, that, that road used to be a little more quiet when the drones were kind of all in the center. That's a busy, the country's a busy road.
Yes.
So, uh, yeah, that's all.
So we have to take a vote then, right? Yeah, so our recommendation is to approve as a placeholder at this time, which we wait for to town hall and then we'll bring back, um, an appropriate number once we have it and you guys can decide if you wanna move on with the warrant or if you'd like to vote.
I, I just wanted to be clear that this is not a school-based project. That's the only thing I've.
Yes.
I'm bringing the vote on the floor of town meeting.
And ask to consent.
And whoever that person.
So no chest can stand up at town meeting. Yeah, they're, they're just gonna have to be mentioned because it's gonna go on the, on a, the warrants as school committee has support, like just to bring it out warrant. So what I have to say, listen, we're, we're the ones that put this one on here, but be aware that we were not the, the genesis drivers at all. Yeah.
Yeah, I, yeah. Um, it's your idea. I'm assuming we can ask the type of safety committee, we can do it in partnership because the highway department is involved, um, town hall is involved, so we could we have seen it before with their votes. That way it's not just so. I've never seen us as district representative on the, um, traffic.
Yeah, and, and understand when I say this, like, I'm not, I'm starting to say, but like, you know, we, we've said a couple of times now, we need sidewalks here. I don't know what we do. I don't know what we don't. I don't know what we do. I have no, no, um, expertise around what sidewalks are needed there or not. Somebody brought me this and said, oh, what's, what's coming in sidewalks? My assumption is we need sidewalks, but I don't know. So I don't wanna go forward and be like, yeah, you know, we're behind this. We think this is necessary. I absolutely know that, I'm gonna say it. So, is our, are sidewalks generally a good thing? Yeah, probably. But do we need them right there? I, I just, I mean, I don't, I don't get off. So it's gonna be tough for me to get up and say, yes, what's a hundred percent? I'm probably the town, probably even gonna say exactly what I just said. Listen, we're gonna spend money for something that may not come to fruition. Understand that. And it's a bad fiscal year, so it's not gonna invest it. I will make my, I will talk to them. But I'll make sure that they understand where we're at because kind of circling back to the opposite of it.
Yeah.
It's gonna be another one of those, the school can, you know, hat in hand and ask for money, like, that's not what's happening, so. So what are we, we're voting on just putting the council, right?
They didn't, with no dollar on stuff.
Right.
Which happens every year at town meeting and is this where they come out of meetings prior to town meeting and change the, yeah, so.
Right. That's not so common. Are we good for motion?
Yeah.
Alright, so we'll, second.
I love David. I, I love when that happens, okay? Well, we stay there.
You gotta get it out, but you know, we talked about what's potential.
They're not taking charge yet. No, I'm good with it because I was trying to formulate in my head how I'm gonna say that. Um, first reading athletic complex rental policy.
Um, so this is our first track for the field rentals. Um, we're just going to add this to our, once approved, we're gonna add this to our existing facilities agreement. Um, so where we, um, myself and we worked on this and where we got most of this information was, um, um, got assistance from Minuteman, um, High School, we can spend a brand new complex, brand new facilities, um, there's very likely as well as time. Um, so we kind of adopted it. Some of the areas were brown and we adopted this. The one primary difference that we've added was the priority order that we spoke about, um, we've recently put that in at the very top. Um, the bus is very standard. Um, if you look at, just to skip all the way down, if you look at the asterisk on the bottom, is where we talk about, um, the priority scheduling. When we first discussed this, um, we were fact about having time recreation programs, get sixty days notice. Um, the more we, we first came up with this, bigger, probably the higher is the lot of this time rent programs. But the more we thought about it, thinking about the revenue, we actually do think that this should be a little bit longer. I think it was one twenty at least.
So, do we have an error in that right now? This is true. Is it says, the rec program should be granted by the special request I'll receive within sixty days of effect. Available dates within sixty days of effect shall be open to third party review, no party.
Two or three at least.
It shouldn't be.
My, my only concern at the time is if, if there's time recreation programs that maybe are loosely organized, for, for lack of a better term, if we're giving them four months or three months or whatever that number is, my concern is it, it, we're potentially losing a stream of revenue which we desperately need. And I understand, you know, the time rep programs and so forth, but if they are not doing their due diligence and being organized, then that's my biggest concern is we're turning away somebody that.
Yes.
We could get a group that could come on here and say, I want Monday through Friday for the next six months. But, so my concern is someone who is, you know, diligent enough to say they need, you know, they can project it out. That's, that's kind of a concern I have, you know, and, and I don't know which town rep programs use it. My, my assumption is it's baseball, softball. Uh, occasionally Morton use soccer, but and, and I don't know.
Football uses it.
So.
It's, it's.
No, like I say, my, 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 that's my biggest concern with the, with the timeframe is, you know.
And sixty days is not enough.
Well, it, I mean, well, theoretically for anybody, right? And it's like, and you guys, you both, but don't, it doesn't seem like, it seems like a really short window to get in there and do something like that, particularly with like seasons and stuff. If we did sixty days where the chances of wrecking this thing are sometimes not great.
And I mean, because you can't, you can't.
You can't, you can't ask somebody around. So, uh, to me, sixty is way too little. I honestly think like one twenty is probably a fair number. I obviously wouldn't go, probably may go a little bit more.
Yeah.
Because ultimately what you're trying to do, you know, like, let's just take baseball for example. Baseball says in, you know, December, hey, we run a rep every Friday night, basketball cross, which is called seven and nine. We're gonna run every night at seven and nine. Here's the dates that we play, we plug those in. Once those are plugged in, they're on the hook for those dates.
Uh huh.
You know, now, maybe we do, you know, a cancellation policy that within sixty days, if you don't cancel, you're paying that fee. You know, that's like you rented the field and now you catch bombs, you know? So I think we could maybe build something along those lines. I get a little confusion, but sixty days, these rental companies, they suck. It's, we're gonna, we're going somewhere else.
I mean, you're, you're.
We need to have that, you know, Memorial Day tournament squared away and ready to go, you know? Yeah, it can't be like, oh, we're doing it thirty days.
I also wonder if it would give like, man, it's like. Sorry.
I'm gonna say to the man, where you wanna be, doctor?
Yes, D E S I. Norton Youth Baseball may say, okay, we know moving forward that we have to have these dates upfront ahead of time. We're going to always do Sunday mornings from nine to noon in perpetuity. And we just know that that's when we play.
Right.
And it, that might be helpful, but then we, then we know that too, because you can play.
The alternative is, for example, your fall sports, football and softball, they're gonna, so they may not meet over the summer.
Well, that's on them.
No, but, but that's the thing with the sixty days.
Cause they're not for these days, then they're missing out on this.
But I would think the other part to this.
They, they also think about, so if you're saying for your, if they don't know what their schedule is, and they have to tell us within sixty days, they have to tell us in July. Or it's September.
Yeah.
I mean, I know all my years in Norton Youth Soccer, it's the first nine Saturdays after everything.
Right.
But I don't think Norton Youth Soccer really is, is using those fields for games because it's bad. So, I mean, I don't know what that number looks like, but, you know, if we're turning away revenue because something, you know, I just don't want it to be a town rep program, any town rep program comes into us on Monday and says, we need it for Sunday, sorry. No, but if it's open, if it's open, we got that call and says, yeah, hey, of course. So I think probably what makes some sense is, and you guys can tell me if the, the dates don't really work that well, but the, the calendar maybe opens a year ahead of time. And it opens up for, um, for town. And then. And then. Six months ahead of time, it opens up for the general public. My strong suggestion would be.
And and then I would say, if if. At at six months, but opens up for the general public and they, somebody rents it, then that's it. They have already kind of like this. Like you can't. Cause we can't just pull through the revenue and say, well, if if you come in last minute, you know, Norm, and I'm not hearing on soccer, but soccer comes in. The day before big tournament says, we want to use it. Okay, sorry, you guys, so there has to be some, uh, there has to be some break points for everybody. But you do have to give, I think, in a sort of every sense, you have to give, like, the, um, like, um, the Titans, the boss. They they can't, they can't know, you know, they can't tell you. Three weeks ahead of time, hey, we we're gonna have a game there, cause if they can't. Then what are they gonna do? Like, they need to know. Months and months ahead of time where their games are gonna be played, where their practice is gonna be, et cetera. So they want to book things well in advance, I think of even their season starting. So, you know, if your season is for the Titans, let's say it goes, you know, through the spring, whatever, it goes four months. You want to maybe predict at least two or three months before your season starts. So. From from that moment to the end of it, that's, we're talking about seven, eight months out. If they need to, they need to book out fairly long.
My, so, yeah, my suggestion would be, would be a date. If Aaron's gonna know, generally speaking. Okay, he's not gonna know what he's gonna do again. He's going to know ideally, probably in October, maybe in November. Hey, here's the spring schedule from the tryout league or whatever. Here's what we're looking at. When can, I'm sure the AP's all talk, when can you host games, when you can not, whatever. He's, hey, every Friday, I'm gonna probably have that field, whether it be girls, boys across. There's a Friday that opens up, we release it. Come, give him a month, six weeks, however long he needs, you know? Get that done. Then it goes to the town and we say, hey, December first, and I'm making, I'm making these times out. December first, all requests have to be in by December first. Then on January first, we open it for rentals for the spring. Now, if baseball comes back. And says, or or soccer, or whoever comes back in February and says, hey, could we use? July tenth, and no one's on the field, I would say, hey, sorry, what we haven't rented that spot out yet, you know? But I think, I think by setting a date in a a drop dead. It it's not like, well. In June, sixty day or a hundred and twenty days back was here, in July, it's here, like you're going through a whole schedule rather than just say, hey, we need what you're looking for, you know? The problem with all these youth sports, as we all know. You don't know what you really know until the registrations are in, the teams make, you know? You might have one year of, you know, eight teams in in Little League for, you know, the under eight group. And next year you get twelve and all of a sudden you have to add an extra hour, you know, or or take away. But I think if we get a general picture of, hey, we're gonna use it on Sunday mornings, nine to noon, right? Come March, which is when we know what registration is, if we're like, hey, we can give you guys back an hour, so you give the schools, you know, for for rental plans.
Okay, can I ask you, when you say, you know. Open it, whatever, for spring, you mean from spring right through summer, like that it's, the season is. Not just spring, it's spring, summer, and like. The whole thing, yeah. Yeah, that makes sense to me too. Like, I I think. I think that's the way you gotta go.
And if you wanted to break it down, because Aaron's not gonna have his fall schedule in the. Of of that program, let's just say this year.
He has a general idea.
He has a general idea of when they're doing, he knows when they're gonna be practicing, but again, he's not gonna know exactly. So we might have to do this twice. You do all all spring and summer rentals or December first, all fall rentals are March first. And you just kind of keep it going.
Yeah, he may not know his schedule, but what he, what he probably does know is he knows how many games needs to fit in. So we can probably say, I'm gonna reserve this date, this date, this date, this date, this time, this time, this time. Well, and then, and then when they make the high school schedule or whatever, you can say, here are the times that I have reserved, you know, it's.
And then ultimately too, I think by doing this. Because I think there's certain weekends and certain tournaments and rentals. But we can say, and just say it very simple, hey, baseball, hey, soccer, hey, lacrosse, whoever it may be. We know every year we have a massive rental that we get thirteen thousand dollars from over this weekend. Can you guys not go that weekend? We'll give you a time during. And then you start opening those lines of communication that, hey, can you help us out? Then when we have a rain out or something goes on, hey, we have a field open on Tuesday, you, no problem. Go down there, we'll flip the lights on for you. You guys are all set. And kind of have that community feel to it as well, you know, but again, I think. As we all know, youth sports are difficult. You get a new president, it's a president's there for two years, someone leaves, blah, blah, blah. You just gotta stick it in and then, but it's the youth job to say, hey, by December first, we gotta get our crap into the schools. If we don't, it's on us.
Yeah.
I think the dates are definitely easier rather than having sixty days, trying to keep up with what is the sixty days. Yeah, I think if we just have a hard date, it'll be easier for people to know.
Yeah.
So Wade, this year, um. Do you have any thoughts in terms of dates or what that potentially, you know, on your athletic experience and other.
Too. I mean, I, we want to make money on the fields with third parties. If we do, we need to give. Third party renters enough time to plan a tournament or an event, advertise for it, get, make sure they have teams for it. They have to have that window span. So if you want to make money, there has to be a big window there for them to lock tournaments in. If you, we, as you know, we don't charge, don't do baseballs, it's fields. If you just open up to them and say, okay. Uh, we need your schedule by December thirty first. They're gonna rush out, give you a schedule and they're gonna blank it every day that they can possibly blank it because they're not paying for the fields. And they'll just, they've got to over ask and then give back later. Like, we could use revenue during that. So if you want to be a community field and use it for high school sports and recreations, then you go with that smaller sixty day.
Well, that's not what we want to do. That's what we sold those fields on. That's what we were told we were going to do.
Then then if that's what we're gonna do, then that's.
But we, I just said we were gonna make money off of them too.
Right.
Right.
And we gotta be very careful with this because this is where it gets very dicey. Those fields were sold, that they were going to be. High school sports first, community field second, and then rentals. That's why we're doing this now. And again, I, we have to put policies and procedures in place. But it's not what we want to do. It's what we sold thirteen, twelve million dollars to the town in tax barrier bond. That's what we sold it on. We gotta be careful in terms of how we're going to do that. If I get a policy and procedure in place, we've covered ourselves and said, hey, you had your opportunity. Sorry, baseball, but you didn't have your act together. Blame your board. Someone go join the board and get and be back.
Well, I think we're talking about doing that. I just think that we have to be cognizant that we did talk about revenue. So we have to, you know, I know for myself, booking ice rentals at the length. Like, I have people who booked two years in advance for a tournament, right? They want a certain date, they booked two years in advance. So I understand what Wade is saying. It's difficult.
Again, I think with those ones. I think the youth leagues in town are going to say, we understand, you know? Those 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 typically those tournaments, certainly renting fields. Saturday's day, sometimes Mother's Day, Memorial Day weekend, July fourth. It's always the holiday weekends where they can get in there. Friday, Saturday, Sunday, possibly Monday, and they're running sixty-five games a day.
So what about, say, so what about, cause, cause I understand what Wade's saying and and. Of course, you wanna, you wanna think that these guys will be good partners, you know, but I know that's not always true. What if, I don't know if this will work or not, um, but what if we allowed. Private, it's called private sector to come in and say, we would like next date prior to December thirty first. And then say, we would like this date or that weekend or whatever. And the caveat is, listen, if if a town lead comes in and says, we want that date. Then they they have the ability to bump you up to December thirty first. Now. It gives us the opportunity if. Baseball comes in for the sake of the conversation, comes in and says, hey, we want this date, this date, this date, and they want that date, we can go to baseball at that point and say, hey, we have a tournament scheduled here, it's revenue. Can we move you to a different date? I would like to think that they would be accommodating to it. I mean, if if they're not, if if people, and not picking on baseball, but if, you know, if if there's a sport that's like, no, we want every date, every weekend, whatever. Then the next time we're in a town meeting and they say, where's all the revenue, we'll say, you know, Norton Youth Basketball is on the field. Running wind sprints every, every Friday, you know, they're taking all the folks out and there's nothing we can do about it, so.
Um, so just thoughts on a tournament. I'm thinking about like the conference model. If you run a conference year after year after year and you want to have it at the same space. You enter into a multi-year contract. So if we have a league that wants to run a tournament every year on Columbus Day weekend, we say, we can guarantee you this weekend. But you have to sign a four-year commitment.
Right.
Or something like that, at least that we could say. We've made this commitment for the next four years.
So then that case, what we should do is we should say, if we're in a regular large contract like that, it is a, it's a prepayment.
Mm-hmm.
And put in the policy to say, if there's a prepayment of multiple years for a certainty, like, don't allow them to take. Every, you know, like, don't, don't allow, like. The Titans to come in and say, we want every Wednesday, Thursday, Friday afternoon and Sunday, Sunday, the next five years and.
It's your three-day weekends and a tournament.
A tournament, a tournament, you know, like, like. And and this was my other thing I I jotted down. I would say. You know, there's no. And I'll assume, hopefully I'm assuming partial truth. There's no town. Recreational league that's going to try and host a tournament on one of those three-day weekends. Going up against, it might be, I I mean, but here's, here's my other concern now is. If we, and and I know that a very fine line. I would rather a long weekend go to a rent to burn. Than a recreational program for the simple fact that has a ton of revenue. Over three days and I would rather take the, you know, I would say. Norton Youth Baseball, you, he hurts, and I'm not picking on them, but you don't get Memorial Day weekend because that is huge for soccer, lacrosse, or whatever it is, but. Cause I mean, it. We backed ourselves into. Where we're trying to be good community partners and we're also trying to. You know, we have field maintenance and to to that's his point, if we have a partner that comes in and says, I want sunup to sundown in the summer. And I'm gonna eat, and what if they don't use it? But then we've lost revenue, we don't have any money going into the account for maintenance, which actually you know is, those are associated costs to having these good fields. So I mean, I I I don't know what the answer is. Uh, unfortunately, but it's just. You know. These these three-day weekend tournaments are huge money. Uh. That. You know. The last tournament, one of my kids played in those two thousand teams spread across Massachusetts. And some of them played at Wheaton. Uh, you know, these these big tournaments sometimes do not have enough space. You know.
Yes, this is something that we've been dealing with for us here in the next year point, um, that's, we've kind of been doing this. So Tim McCarty's been doing all our scheduling. Helping Aaron and I out doing this and. We we really try to accommodate everybody, all our export teams. Football, uh, soccer, as well as baseball, softball. We try to accommodate all them as well as really try to. Do that five walk, that bounce and act with bringing in that third party. And I think Tim has done an incredible job this year, considering this has all been new to us. He's done a really good job. He hasn't said no to too many people. We tried to find a way to make it work. Um, I think, I think what I'm hearing right now is. The community asked us to put a policy together. A policy is A, B, C, D, E. It it's black and white. There's no gray area, but I'm hearing a lot of gray area there. This is a really complicated. Issue. That we're dealing with. I think it's, it's hard to put in paper. I think the best way to go about this is the way that we've kind of been going about it and and. Kind of, I think what you're suggesting to us is kind of a, let's have communication between the different organizations. We kind of know who the players are now. Actually, we didn't. We know that soccer is very much interested in it. Uh, we know that this. The baseball, we're just, you know, interested in not getting out space. We kind of know their timelines and. After this year, this first year, I think we've done a really good job. I I personally don't think there's been too many. Conflicts. And again, I think we haven't said no to too many people. Fields are open now. They're open twenty-four seven. We don't lock them up anymore. So anybody, today, there was a bunch of kids out there playing baseball out there today. Uh, the community can use them as much as they want, as long as it's not during school hours. Um, Aaron has his schedule and he'll have, he gets out there as soon as he can, but when you're talking about scheduling these tournaments, they need to be, they need to be a a wide range of times because. They they need to advertise for this. But Norton Youth Baseball doesn't mean they don't, I mean, we just open registration for for spring sports. We don't. We just got our schedules, like, so Aaron doesn't really know the timelines of our games yet, like, so. Norton Youth Baseball, they don't have their schedules together yet. So I think the communication just has to be open and need need how to, but it's hard to put it down policy, US, put a policy together. And it's just really hard.
Well, this is not, I don't, don't, this is not a like criticism of policy. This is, I mean, it's first reading.
Yeah, yeah.
You know, this is what I've been going on tonight. We're just trying to talk through like what.
Absolutely.
Does it doesn't work and maybe hear from people like, like yourself. You know, what? If we throw an idea out, like shoot a hole, you know, what's what's wrong with this idea? So it's, this is.
I think you're doing a pretty good job of being jealous.
I I think too, after listening to you talk, I'm kind of taking my school committee half and putting myself back at the rank in what I do with the schedule, right? We have all kinds of renters and like six high schools that are gonna wear the home ring to. It it's exactly that. Like, I know who our players are and I make it work. But it's, if I had to follow a script by date, it it's very difficult to do that because I have to go to people. Like, I have to go to Norton and say, hey, guys, can you bump your practice? Because so and so doesn't have a game that day, so if they can take the practice, can I move you to this time? It's always shuffling, but at at the end of the day, nobody misses out because I just make it work. You make it work. So I mean, now that I'm thinking about it through like what I do every single day, you're a hundred percent right. Making it black and white really handcuffs.
Of course.
So 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 don't make it too black.
Yeah.
The problem, yes, I understand what you're saying. The issue is. You're charging rent time for everything you do.
Mm-hmm.
It doesn't matter if.
Well, actually, that's not true. That's not true. We do have some things that we do not charge for.
Okay.
Yeah, that is not true. Yeah.
How, I mean, ninety percent of this problem is you're making money off of it.
Yeah.
So so for you to say, hey. Three hundred dollars a sheet of ice, doesn't matter who comes in, you can shuffle the board. Here it's a little trickier, cause we're either in the business of making money or in the business of doing what we said we're going to do.
Yeah, but I think that if we're making it work and everybody's getting their correct.
Right. And this is what I think drove baseball. Do you, you know, this is just me tapping my own personal opinion. I don't know, I don't know if speak for baseball board, if you will, but. They're, they were told, hey, this is what we're gonna do. The normal community is gonna get, you know, after athletics, they're gonna get. They go onto the calendar and go look at it and it's a bunch of rentals. So like.
I think.
We're also the growing pains too.
Sure.
And that, and that's how we need policy, you know?
I think we're in the business of doing what we said, but what we said was we're gonna prioritize.
Correct.
So that's why I think. Town, but then make money afterwards if we can. And that's, that's. Where we're heading, I think, right now.
But when you go and you're like, hey, we want to, you know, baseball's thinking, oh, we'd love to have the older kids play Friday nights, the younger kids on Sunday mornings or whatever, and then all of a sudden there's a rental on four of those weekends that you were like, eh, wait a second. That was the weekend we were passing again, doing.
Yeah.
It's that, I, you can picture how that can be frustrating.
And the thing is, baseball has to think, like, they have to start planning more ahead, like what you were saying, is.
Quite frankly, you want, if you want to do a two-year calendar, do a two, if that is what works for Wade and Aaron and and Timmy. Do a two-year calendar. I don't care what, I don't care what the policy necessarily is. It just needs to be some type of a plan. There has to be the ability to say, wait a second, Karen, Norton High School's sports come first, this comes next. If you, if you think a year out is worth it, if you think it's three years out, if Timmy says, hey, this is how I work and this is what's gonna work best for me, that's fine. However, there has to be an opening and there has to be, when someone goes and looks at that calendar, they're trying to put their their sport in. You can't look on there and all the dates are taken by rentals.
Yeah.
So is this something that maybe we should have Timmy come back and and.
Yeah.
Maybe we need to have him and Aaron and and have a larger conversation and maybe even somebody from baseball. Like, let's just have a larger conversation about how we can make this work, because I think we are making it work.
Correct.
But having a policy in place, I think we have to be careful. Yeah, I think we just have to be careful, so putting things so black and white that.
Right, you don't want to make it overly restricted.
Yeah.
You don't want, you give yourself.
Right.
The other thing to think about is, listen, like we're saying, and we're talking about Norton Youth Baseball, I like. Remember, I I don't know how the parking is, but. If if Norton Youth Baseball takes the field every single day, for, you know, three hundred and sixty-five days of the year. We still have, you know, another field we can write down too. Like, it's not like, okay. There's there are multiple fields out there, you know, we have a multi-use, we have baseball field, we have football slash soccer slash lacrosse. So it it's. Not that somebody can come in and say, okay, I'm gonna restrict all revenue for the end of time. We actually have multiple fields we can use, so it's. You know, let's get, let's get the exit parties, it's gonna be, let's stand the game together, we'll talk it through one more time, so maybe we have a third reading.
I have one other thing. And I'm sorry, you know?
Well, I was just saying, and then and then we can make a policy that it's not overly restrictive, but at least. We we know the pecking order. There's no, nobody denies the pecking order. It's just a question of making sure that. We can, we can allow the pecking order to naturally take place without, you know, without bumping somebody, like you said, and that was, and again, to Tim's point, I think that was growing pains, like I think we just didn't. Know what we were doing yet and, you know, that's, that's great. It's this brand appeal. So, you know, over time, we're gonna, we're gonna get it.
Cause I mean, I think the first game in the open was the last soccer season. There's like, you know, senior night was 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 a great night, but like, nobody was really prepared because it's on the new fields, that's that. Multi-purpose. One, one thing I wanna, I don't know if we put this in there or just add it to the discussion. My concern, a broad concern is if. If there's a town league, whether it's football, baseball, soccer. I don't want them to allocate their time to somebody else and they, like, they can like sublease.
Yeah.
Or because, because I absolutely not, because, you know. One, they're making money off of somebody else's, and second, there's transition there because. You know, if if, you know, Norton Youth insert team here says, hey, Dyson. You know, you want, here's a, give us a hundred bucks, we can.
So I think we can be pretty frank and light about that.
Yeah.
Yeah, you know, some.
Yeah, I know, I know, so you only, you can make that extra.
Yeah, so that's.
And I think we should probably put something in there to to Wade's point, which is a great one, that like, you know, you blanked it. A a calendar and you're like, hey, we want to go take every Friday from six to ten, and then you only use it seven to eight. That's also a problem. So we need to, because, because, hey, no, look, baseball, instead of going seven to eight, we're gonna actually push you eight to nine, so we can rent the field from five to eight. And that's, that is a conversation.
And I can think to your point, like, you're saying, we're either, we either do this or we do this, but if we're doing it right, we're doing both. We're allowing, we're allowing it to be. Right, and so it's it's all about community.
It's for the town, because it is for the town, it's how paid for it should be for the town, plus, towns aren't used.
We also talked about making money too, so that we can pay for the further costs, right? And we all know that turf fields only last so long, and it won't be long before we're sitting and having the same conversation. Alright, so let's table that, get more people at the at that table, and then we'll come back to talk about it. Okay, alright, second reading is about surplus items, while I'll see their visions. Okay, so we have fiscal management, the um disposal of surplus items here. Um this is updated based on feedback that I received the last time we discussed this, which, but honestly, it's been quite a while. Um so we, uh what what I did was we, I went through and really tried to make it much shorter. Um initially, the the process of the surplus items at ten thousand dollars or more, or less than ten thousand, it's two different. Um full items with the exact same process, um I've actually reached out to the town hall, to the fire department, to the police department. Um and there is no department in town that actually has this policy that already exists. Um what I was told by both chiefs and by um town hall was that they all follow. Um the MGL, which I included for you as well, which is uh tangibles by disposition, which is chapter thirty B, section fifteen. Um and that is referenced here as well, so I I thought that perhaps, you know, giving it a little bit more process. Uh we talked about the fact that um the business administrator is the person who had it goes to that process. Um if we are unsure of what the value of something is, we will go out and bring a third person in in order to help us determine that value. Um that list of items that is going to be disposed of, then comes to me as superintendent, and then we will make a recommendation. Um so that way, you guys will see regardless of what the value is, items that are being disposed of, and um. Can not have any questions that come up based on whatever the value is. Um and then ultimately, through the bid process, the school committee has the opportunity to reject a bid. Um if guys feel that um you may be able to negotiate a higher sale, or um you wanna go back out and resell the bits. So it definitely gives us more of a um concrete process to go through, which I I also don't think is super cumbersome. Um if we were going to uh go the auction route, that would be done through the town hall, um just the way any other department does that. Um so definitely.
I think the one thing with this policy, it is, I'd rather not like a bunch of one-off, like.
Yeah, no, it should be like.
Stack up, you know, like twenty, like, i- i- if we're cleaning out, you know, fifteen classrooms and we have desks. I don't wanna do this like, oh, well, this classroom is this year, and these three are next year, just. I'd rather one fell swoop with this, I just don't want it to be, to be come cumbersome and say. Oh, we have this desk, we gotta open a bid process, then we have this bookshelf, and it just, uh this would be my preference.
So you don't want us to blow it down, but.
That's that's more a question.
Absolutely.
I was gonna try to get those right, probably go ahead.
Yeah, so um Danette asked for a clean copy without all of the changes.
I think generally, I mean, in the future, like, we should get both, because.
So that's the way we've done things in the past, with the redacting and kind of, you know, moving things around, um but this is the clean copy and not taking two.
Between that and Lincoln's giving me anything in my tiniest form.
Alright, so anybody have anything else, we're ready to vote on this? We're looking to vote on the surplus items policy as written. Thank you, guys, any other business? Alright, so now, we are going to adjourn to entering to executive session for the purpose of discussions on school safety, not to return to open session. Is there a second on that motion?
Uh that is a, a roll call vote.
Right, but we need a second first.
Uh motions, motion to adjourn to executive session, but a matter of discussion.
In a second? Okay, now, I'm a yes, to this, Nick?
Yes.
Justine?
Yes.
Thanks for coming.